It's 6:30 and Damian's here. I'll call the meeting to order. Stand up for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call? Okay.
Mayor Dave Dillon.
Here.
Council members Ken Mueller.
Here.
Norris Johnson.
Here.
Lindsay Larson.
Here.
Lori Game. Lori Game is absent.
Can I get an approval, a motion for approval of the agenda?
Should move.
A second.
I don't believe you have anything to add tonight?
No.
All right. All in favor of the agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Agenda passes. On the consent agenda tonight, the approval of the minutes from August 17th, 2023, approval of the minutes, special council meetings, September 6th, 2023, and approval of bills. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Any discussion on that? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes. Open forum. Forgot again, Delores. If you have not, if you have not signed in when you came in, please make sure you sign in at the table in the back. Now, on open forum. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to discuss anything with the council that is not on the agenda, please stand up, give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Hope and my address is 640 Second Avenue, South of...
What was your question or concern?
I have a very strong feeling in regards to smart meters and having one installed in my house, and very strongly about it, where I'm searching for lawyers now because of the level that you guys have made this mandatory with no opt-out and then to threaten my water usage. I feel to be most extreme. What I was curious about with you guys, maybe you have some information that has escaped me, and I've been looking everywhere trying to find out as much as I can about smart meters and every source, and you can find a plethora of anything you want on every avenue. What I would like to know is like, because I've got five minutes, if we could, have you guys tell me what your sources were for investigating the smart meters and where you looked to get your information in order for you to base your decision for this community on. And then I want to know when you're doing that, if you found out anything regarding health and smart meter.
Gary's not here. I don't know. It's many, many communities use them.
Yeah, they're all over the state.
Well, our public works guy isn't here tonight, but he, I mean, it's not like it's a new thing that's come out. Many, many communities use it. Gary knows about it. He is the expert on it compared to us.
I don't know that it's necessarily classified as a smart meter. It's a radio, a radio.
Right.
It just sends a radio signal.
Do you guys know how often it sends a signal out and at what frequency?
That would be a Gary question.
Would it be monthly?
This is a great time for me to jump.
It would be when they read the meters monthly.
Right.
Probably once a month.
So once a month when they read them?
This one doesn't constantly ping off because my understanding is that every one of those meters is set to ping at a certain interval of which I believe that you can set. And I never heard of one going off once a month. Just once a month. I've never heard that. They ping regularly, which puts radiation and frequencies through your house, through the floors, through the walls, depending on how close you are in proximity to it. And the high, and the frequency level of which it's pinging at is dependent on some of the health issues. To shorten this up, where I went to find my information regarding about the health issues was since they had been out since 2006 and have been installed in various homes across the country, I chose to look into those cities that had had these meters and people were living with them the longest. And then I went after the medical to see if there was any evidence as a result of true to life, people living through this, if they had come up with any kind of problem that they're having as a result of having that new piece of equipment in their home. And there has been substantiated evidence that there are documented issues with smart meters regarding your health. They are not obviously imminent right away, but they build up over time. And like about 10 years is when people are going to start to come down with some pretty heavy duty problems. So they are, they're not as safe as a big business would like you to decide. And just a thought about that in regards to it is that when you have to ask yourself, why would a big business not do a study? Because you guys, they study everything. They study, take humor, I mean, now they're not going to take this and study it when it's got several things about it that could go real wrong, the radiation, the level of the technology, how often it's pinged, where it's located. And I'm just really not willing to have that put in my home. I'm just not. I suffered from autoimmune disorders and a plethora of them. And they have found unfortunately that for that particular problem, that these smart meters have a bad effect for those issues. And it's documented by the people that are actually living through it at this moment in time. What I would like you guys to consider would be to opt out. You know, I do understand that you guys are also, you know, running a business. The tonal lack of basically can be considered a business, having your own water. I can certainly understand you people wanting to have this implemented. Yet I don't feel that it's quite right that it is a mandated forced thing, that I should be allowed to have an opt-out without getting, say, crucified for monthly fees for it. You're fortunate that I'm the only one to shoot coming across that is having some issues. I don't know if I am, but I did ask earlier, I think it was you, and she said that there was no other people. But I'm, I'm telling you that it would be very mean if they were actually really aware of what's going on.
We have had radio signal meters. When were they first installed?
We've had them for years. It's already been happening.
Doesn't years ago?
This is just a better program.
This is just, it's a new version, but it, but it's been, it's been in effect for, do you remember, Delores? It's, it's gotta be at least...
I was still working in the police department when they did that.
Yeah.
I know our house has had one for 15 years.
You've already been having it happen.
Ours, ours has had it for...
This is the first that I have heard of it.
Pennsylvan houses, Pennsylvan houses. I didn't know that my house had one, but when they came in to do the new ones, they said, you already got it. You've had it for years.
Yeah.
Ours is 19 years.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's been a long time. I mean, I've been in a lot of basements and I've, I mean, you'd see those little transmitters everywhere, every house.
But some of them, I don't know.
I really struggle every day with my health. As far as trying to get a toilet, I'm not saying it's because of that, but I am very, very apprehensive of having that anywhere near me. And if it's in there, I'm going like this, I'm gonna do another few bit, you know?
Well, we can certainly pass concern on to Gary, see if he has some information and our city attorney and we can kind of get there.
That would be great. If you guys could get back to me or I could get a phone number or call or something, I would really appreciate that because I am really, really concerned.
Okay, thank you.
I share some of your concern too because we are surrounded by wireless signals from, I mean, our cellphone, the remote control for the TV, to the thermometer, to the wireless...
Well, you have everything wireless anymore.
...to a 160 cell phone, ping and through you. So it's, you know, we just have to think of basic things. We all know that radiation in the human body do not mix. So, and when they tell you, oh, it's a fine, it's an acceptable amount, well, there really isn't acceptable amount for the human body and radiation. Nor do animals that live outside because it's also has effects on them too because it's whipping through the air.
Well, we can look into that and see what we can come up with. Go ahead. Thank you.
Let's move on.
Anybody else? Hearing nothing. Move on to our public hearing. The City of Malacca will now open up the public hearing in regard to the interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses. The time is 6:40 PM. Anyone wishing to speak, please go to the podium and state your name and address and your, you know, concerns or information.
Hi, everybody. My name is Joe Opager. My address is 12460 160th Street here in Malacca. As you are all probably aware, my wife Amber and I own The Mellow Fellow. We are the only licensed THC retailer in Malax County. So this interim ordinance that is being considered is pretty important to us and something that we've been keeping a pretty close watch and eye on. We are in support of everything in the ordinance itself except for the moratorium on cannabis businesses. Now, the moratorium is being considered to study the need of an interim ordinance, which we are in place. That's what we all worked on last year. And most of what's in this new interim ordinance, we already have in place. There's four items that the local city government is going to be able to control with cannabis businesses coming in. Number one is requiring local registration of these businesses, which we currently do. We have our THC license from the City of Malacca and it's hanging in our store and we're pretty proud of it. Number two is adopting reasonable restrictions on the time, place, and manner of the establishment. Although there are no restrictions on time, we do carry normal hours of just 11 to 8, five days a week, 11 to 5 on Sundays, and then we're closed on Mondays. So any change to the hours won't have much of an effect on us, but if we want to put some restrictions in place for possible other businesses, we totally support that. But as far as the place and manner of the establishment, we already have those guidelines in place. We're not allowed to have a THC establishment within 500 yards of, or 500 feet of the school currently. You're not allowed to have a movable establishment. You're not allowed to go to rec park and sell edibles. You have to have a business. There are certain restrictions for that businesses that are already in place. Number three is limiting the number of cannabis licenses that the city issues or the amount of cannabis businesses that are allowed into a city. We currently don't have any restrictions on that, but as, like I said, the sole THC business in Malax County, we are in support of that. We do think there should be a limit on the number of businesses. But again, we're just kind of worried about that moratorium. The fourth issue that will be studied with this interim ordinance is prohibiting the operation of a business within 1,000 feet of a school or 500 feet of a daycare. Currently, our ordinance reads that we're not allowed to operate within 500 feet of this school. So this new ordinance is actually extending that another 500 feet. Just another example of the current ordinance that we already have in place is more restrictive than this one. So my argument is why do we need to have a moratorium to study for hours, basically, or limiting the number of businesses allowed in the community? I think, you know, probably amending the current ordinance or changing some of the language in there is much more effective rather than putting a 14-month moratorium in place. That's only going to put us at a disadvantage to other businesses that are going to open up when the time comes. The state's being very vague right now about that timeline. They're saying in the springtime, applications will open to become a retail store or a grow operation or anything like that. That's when the, the application process will open. When it opens in the spring, they're going to get bombarded with applicants across all different, the entire state for all different types of business, whether you're going to be a retailer, a delivery service, a grower, anything like that. And so a moratorium having that in place, if the state gets their act together and are issuing licenses by summer, that's just going to put us at a disadvantage where other, other businesses in other counties are going to be opening up, ready to go. We're going to be having to work to repeal this moratorium that's in place or waiting until January 1st, 2025. So for those reasons, I ask that you reconsider this absolute moratorium and possibly consider maybe just amending the current ordinance we have in place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time?
I forgot to say something just really quick. The United States 7th District Court of Appeals just made a ruling that smart meters fall under the fourth amendment.
Okay, but we're on a different topic now. So we're on the topic of the cannabis businesses moratorium. Hearing no one else on that, we will close the public hearing at 6:45 PM. And move back to request communications, which there aren't any ordinance resolutions. Now we are at ordinance 513, prohibiting cannabis use within public property and public places, second reading. Can I get a motion on that?
Move for approval?
A second.
Okay, discussion. This can be rescinded at any point in time, so that, if one concerned...
You're talking about 515?
Oh, no.
This is 513.
Oh, yep, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I was getting ahead of myself too. You're not the only one.
Yeah, this 513 and then it's...
I was on the other one.
On the public property.
Oh, yeah.
How broad is that, Damian, that...
I mean, it's only any, any public property, city-owned property, public facilities, parks, rights of way, things like that. Are you talking about the possession and use ordinance?
Yeah, basically the same as alcohol.
Basically, one thing I should note that I did make a change from the last draft is there was some concern about the issue of the edible, edibles, and whether or not that draft would have affected the ability to, like, possession, use in public areas. The sense that I got was that you did not want that to be covered, so I redacted that and took that out.
Yep.
So it's expected of use possession. Right now, yes, it is very much like alcohol and it doesn't exclude the edibles and, or the liquids and things like that.
Okay. Any other questions or... on that? We're all good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, hearing nothing. All in favor of ordinance 513? Indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance 513 passes. Ordinance 2330, authorization to summarize ordinance 513 for publication. Can I get a motion for that?
Should move. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution 2330 passes. Now we're at ordinance 514, interim ordinance authorizing a study and imposing a moratorium on the operation of cannabis businesses, second reading. Can I get a motion for that?
Move for approval? Give me a second again. Well, there you go.
With no second, the, he would die, correct?
Procedurally, correct. If it's the desire of the majority of the council to not enact the moratorium, then the matter would not proceed and the motion would fail at this point in time. One thing I should note though, that the, the ordinance, the regulations to which I believe he was referring to relate to the edibles and the liquids and things of that nature. It doesn't extend to the extent of THC material that the new laws aren't designed to govern.
Correct. And that's why I think my comment would be with this would be that that would be in our next plan of attack here over the next couple of months. Because like Joe stated, it's, we don't have a lot of tweaking to do. We tweak it to cover those things and we're in pretty good shape. And the state passes, and when the state passes, if they pass anything more restrictive, we have to follow it anyhow. So it kind of put us covered.
Just one other point, as far as zoning goes, you would need to decide where you want your growers to be.
Right. I mean, that, the number of establishments, we need to tweak ours. Things I think we can hammer out fairly easily. And we have a couple of months at least. I mean, it'll be, if it closes legislature, we have till May. So... Okay, so we're good with 514? Okay, moving on to resolution 2331, authorization to summarize ordinance 514 for publication. That is...
You wouldn't need to do that resolution.
Yep, it won't need to be publicized because there won't be one. Ordinance 515, amending section 156 of the zoning ordinance by making changes to the City of Malacca zoning map. Move for approval?
I'll second that.
Any questions on that? That was the map you gave me, correct, Delores? Okay. Yeah, that was just a simple change.
Yeah.
There's no other discussion? Did I get a motion second? Sorry.
You did.
I did, okay. Then we'll take a vote on ordinance 515. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance 515 passes. Ordinance 516, amending land usage 156.037B regarding height in R3 multiple-family residential, second reading. Any motion for that?
I'll make a motion for approval.
A second.
Any changes since last time that we need to worry about?
Uh-uh.
Nope. Any other discussion? All in favor of ordinance 516? Indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ordinance 516 passes. Here, on to the city manager report.
I have in here a resolution for the Earn Sick and Safe Leave to update our policy based on the new law with the coming up here. Let's get into the here. Do council have any questions on that?
When was the effective date of this? I don't remember. Is it like January 1?
Yes.
Okay. And you're going to need a motion on this. So can I get a motion for approval?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for approval.
Second. Any other discussion on resolution 2332? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution 2332 passes. Police, just the incident report, I'm guessing. He's not here. I should bring up, did you guys get all the information on the attorney general's ruling on liaison officers, student resource officers?
No, not yet. They haven't.
Okay. There's new information. We made a new ruling, kind of tried to clarify. Correct me when I missed something here.
Yeah.
That looks like it might help clarify the situation, but it sounds like there's still a lot of people waiting to work through it all. Damian, you probably heard a little of that too.
Yeah, you did.
There's work to be done. It's not as simple as it's okay now, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So we'll still wait for the league to send us additional information on that.
Yep, and that's what I told Superintendent Weedon too when I talked to him.
Yep, and I kind of told him we'd wait till Quinn gets back and reestablish connection.
Okay. All right, moving on to the parks and public works. I don't think we have anything. Liquor store Vicki's not here. See the roads going in, they're all right by her.
Mm-hmm.
Onto the fire department. Let's start with the truck.
Yeah, we have the custom fire proposal here for the full response pumper. Jesse went out and got specifications on it. They came back with the price on September 15th of $864.890 for their truck. It's under the state bid. They would like a, let's say, progress payment in the amount of $190.39 for the shipment of the chassis to the factory in Wisconsin.
That would be till after around...
Right, like first of the year.
Yeah.
Or after.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's not a right away thing.
They kind of will tell us when they need that payment, I'm sure, as soon as they know it's in delivery.
Yep. And then delivery would be late second, probably third quarter. About a year from now, we'd probably have some service. The thing is that we don't sign it today. It's, it's like everything else, the new, it'll be a new price next month because that's there.
Yep, and it's under what we had had, so that's good.
Yep.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion.
Second that.
Okay, any discussions or questions for Jesse or...
The big one is how do we pay for it? Where, what is, how's the funding?
We have $9 million. So we gotta come up with $400,000, which by that time, we probably would have, we'd have another $25,000 of what the city and the townships contribute. And then our gambling money would be, would be probably another 80, 75.
There's some grand funding too.
There's no levy contribution in our levy this year of the $25,000.
There's no $25,000 this year?
No.
Well, there might be.
There might be by the final maybe.
Yeah.
But it's not in the pre.
It depends on the other truck.
Yeah, the other truck is, is just a grant that we applied for. This will be the second time. And we only have to come up with $25,000 if we get that.
Right.
And...
Yep, we have that.
And that's where that $25,000 is sitting now.
So, but in the end, I don't see us getting that, but we applied once and then the grant writer made us a deal. It was a little, a little over half price because she had mostly everything done. That's the only reason why we applied for it because it's not a great year for trucks. The PIM grants are really weird how they do it. Like some years, they're more for trucks. Some years they're equipment and different types of equipment. But the fact was is we just figured we'd apply for it since we, it was half price and, and if we need to, if we get it, I mean, $25,000 is a drop in the bucket for what we're getting, you know?
So if you don't get it, then that money would also go towards, could go towards it.
It would stay on a reserve bond or go on a reserve bond. Like it always, like every...
Yeah, that was, that's where it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So when would you need that money? In 24 months or what?
Which one?
You know, the last of...
The $190 is...
Yeah.
The $190 should be early, like in January.
January of '24?
They'll let us know when they want it, yeah.
And then the rest will be on delivery, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
So that gives us some time to maybe look at some grant options, kind of at least look into more detail of, you know, would we qualify for some other grants and take a look at those, for sure.
Would the balance be bonded for then?
It'd be a levy. Yep, and it would increase the levy quite a bit, so gotta look for some alternatives. I think Jesse and Chris have both mentioned the option of trying to go to the township to see if they would do a pledge.
No, that's not... No, the township, so whatever we borrow, is, this is what Craig always told me at work. So we borrow $400,000. So $200,000 of that comes from the city and $200,000 comes from the townships. So, and we bond it and then the townships, we just, for the 10 years or whatever our bond is, we just, the townships pay that on top of the regular fire contract.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, but you said a pledge, like...
That's what it's called. It's a general obligation pledge. That's the, the legal term. Yeah. So kind of work with our funding agent to see, because then you might have some drawbacks if the general obligation pledge is too much. You might have a little bit of problems with the township. So we'll try to work through those numbers and once I get all of that together from our financing bonding company, then I'll kind of sit down with you, Jesse and Chris and, you know, we can kind of look at some, how that would all play out, so...
As it sits now, it's in our preliminary budget. It's part of.
It is.
Yes.
Well, we wouldn't bond for this until 2024. Well, we wouldn't bond for this until 2024. We wouldn't do the levy until late 2024 for the 2025 budget.
Yeah.
So, we've got time to work through all of this.
Yeah.
And if we do that general obligation pledge to the townships, we need to give them notification. So, that'd be something that we just need to work through that entire process. And it's a really good thing that we're thinking about all this now because we've got about a year to kind of get all this... these numbers in place.
And if we wait a year, that truck will be a million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Probably.
And this will be replacing the 97 model pumper?
The 93 model will get sold and the 2007 model will be the backup engine there.
Okay.
Will it sell for much?
20 grand.
Oh.
Probably a high number. All fire trucks don't work much.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, I guess we just got some time that we work on it, so...
But we don't have time on this... their proposal.
Correct.
That we need to take care of tonight.
Yeah.
And you had a motion?
Yep, we got a motion and a second. If there's no other questions, all in favor of the proposal, indicate with an "aye."
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Should we get that signed to you tonight?
Well, I'll send it over to the company in the morning.
Okay, anything else we need from fire?
Just therapy situation, whatever.
Yeah, we're still working on some details on that. So, we'll all get together and discuss that too. Kind of work at numbers, look at the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay, that taken care of. Planning commission, no meeting in September?
No meeting.
Budget committee, EDC, they didn't meet. Unfinished business, don't have any in there, miscellaneous new business. 2024 preliminary budget. You want to tackle that one?
Well, let's just start with the levy. So, the levy for the general fund would be the 762-177. The debt levy at 21302. And then the total levy of 975-179, which increased over the previous year, is a 4.43%. And I've been seeing some of the levy increases from other cities and I kind of got shocked at some of them that are there in the double digits. Hinkley just came in with theirs at 56%, so I think we're doing pretty good, which kind of shocked me. So, once we get through with health insurance increases, which I can guarantee they're going to have a decrease, just like they did last year. They always tell you it's a big number first and then when they finally come out, it's a lower number. So, that'll be savings within the budget when we get to the final. And we'll work out the rest of the bond issuances that would happen in 2024 and I'll kind of lay out some bond schedules for you so you can see those when we come back together and meet again for our final and do a workshop again.
And with our preliminary, we can go down, we can't go up?
Correct.
Correct. Yep. Any other questions on that? We've been through it a lot, so I can't imagine there'd be many.
Yeah, I noticed that some of the other cities have got some real... some close by.
Yeah, we have an administrators group that we all email each other and kind of roll things off of each other and that's where all these other ones came in at and...
Okay, no other questions, I'll move on to resolution 2333, approving the preliminary budget and tax levy for 2024. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any more questions or discussion on that?
Was that you, Vincy?
Thank you.
Yeah. Everybody good on that?
Yep.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor of resolution 2333?
Aye.
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 That's fine. Opposed, our resolution 2333 passes. Next item, the council. We will call a public hearing on December 21st. Do you have a... no, sorry, I was like, see if you had a cheat sheet for me, Doris. Public hearing on December 21st, 2023 for truth in taxation, 2024, tax levy and budget. So, we need a motion to call that public hearing. Can I get a motion for that?
So...
I'll second.
Any questions on that? If not, all in favor, indicate with an "aye."
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, public hearing on December 21st passes. Council comments. Doris, you want to go first this time?
Sure, I was down at Rec Park the other day and man, is that place busy. Wow, I bet there were 30 cars down there and kids everywhere and it was really a busy place. That's really, really exciting to see that and use that much. That's all.
Okay, Vincy?
Nothing.
Can I...
Uh, no, not gonna either.
Okay.
No pinstripes allowed on a fire truck.
I don't have anything, so...
How about some flames?
Okay. So, I get a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're adjourned.